To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for everybody coming to the Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, five thirty meeting of the city of Sydney, the greatest city in the world. We are going to operate this meeting in accordance with the Public Meetings Act. On the back wall there is posted for you to read at any time. If you want to get up in the middle of the meeting and read it, it's perfectly fine. Our first action tonight will be to see for the motion for the approval of the meeting for meeting minutes from March twenty-sixth. It do contain my phone number, two four nine, two three two one, although it was mentioned three times, it's only in there once at the bottom, but I'm not going to confirm.
All motion.
Second.
Motion by Bondegarde, second by Radcliffe, roll call please.
Strowman.
Stay.
Buckner.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Bondegaard.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with extension. And now it is time for comments to the public. Anyone want to come up, talk about how their leadership Cheyenne County class is going? Anything? Alright, I tried. Perfect opportunity. So I guess then we'll just move right into Tom Von Segren telling us about what a wonderful city we are. Very well.
Tom Von Segren, Sydney City Parks Superintendent and Tree Board Member. For the past thirty-eight years, Sydney has been designated as a Tree City USA. One criteria to apply for Tree City USA is to have a proclamation read and signed by the mayor each year, and that proclamation, I think, should be in front of you in your packets. This year, the last Friday in April is Arbor Day in Nebraska. We will be having our annual Arbor Day celebration with the city tree giveaway on April twentieth, so two Saturdays from now, and it'll be at the Legion Park Shelter House. Now, that's a big change from being at the youth camp where the board there so graciously hosts us every year. We didn't get reservation there in time this year, so we're going to be hosting out of the Legion Park Shelter House once again. Just a reminder on that, that's a big change. Registration will be at seven AM with the program starting at eight. Chrissy Land, our Western Nebraska Community Forester, will be our speaker. She will discuss planting trees and where the best location for planting would be with considerations for where in relation to your house or other outbuildings or electrical wires, et cetera. And the Arbor Day celebration poster is attached and has all the names of the trees. I can read them here after a bit. The requirements to apply for Tree City USA are to have a tree board, a community ordinance, a forestry program with an annual budget of at least two dollars per capita, and an Arbor Day observance and proclamation. Tree Board is a volunteer board. We have the Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts help us distribute trees every year at the giveaway, and this volunteer activity earns them a patch for community service. We have no cost to rent the shelter house. The actual cost of the giveaway is the purchase of the trees, and last year the trees were purchased for fifty-two hundred and eighty-three dollars. And I guess I want to name off the Tree Board members, Taz Goodrich, Ryan Reisdorf, Andrew Lenzin, Steve Waller, and myself. With that, I think we're to that point of reading the proclamation, and maybe I should answer any questions first, and then we'll do the proclamation. How about that? Is there any questions or anybody?
I just checked.
Last year it was windy and cold.
He wants to know.
And yeah, for our own safety and the safety of the public. Got any updates on that?
Just, just, we're going by Burke's reading there, so if it's going to be warm, great.
I have fifty-three and snow.
Oh, great. A list of our, our trees, we have the hedge maple, Prairie Gold Aspen, Redmond Linden, State Street Maple, American Hornbeam, Redmond Linden, Prairie Expedition Elm, Canada Red Choke Cherry, Hackberry, and Heritage Oak. And we'll be giving away about eighty trees altogether to the folks of Sydney, and they'll be of varying sizes, those different species can get large in your yard, or if you need a smaller one, we have, we have that accounted for. No, that's, yeah, eighty, ninety, we usually give away. The years we give away pine trees, and that bumps it up to, we'll do about a hundred trees on, when we have pine trees, it seems like, so.
And they're free.
That's right, that's right. Come and, you have to come, stay and sign in and stay for the planting demonstration. And so Chrissy Land will put that on for us. We're to that.
Early if you want to get your tree, right?
Yeah, yeah, come early. Come early to get your best chance of the tree you want, so.
Because it's a campground, so you could like come the night before and camp out, be first in line, right?
Okay, this is at the Shelter House, this year.
I wasn't, I was, I was listening, but.
They do have unwanted trees at the end, though, so if you stick around until after everybody leaves.
Yep, if.
You get the Charlie Brown one.
You do, you do, you get to take on a couple. It's kind of nice. Only one orn.
Well, if it's cold, everybody leaves pretty quickly.
Yeah, yep, scouts get us through that pretty fast. I could read the proclamation if you would like, or if you want to.
I would love it if you did.
That's great, great. Alright, our Arbor Day proclamation, in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. This holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Since then, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Trees in our city also increase property values, enhance economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Whereas Sydney has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the past thirty-eight years and desires to continue its tree planting ways, now therefore I, Brad Sherman, Mayor of the City of Sydney, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Arbor Day in the city of Sydney, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program. And I further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Do you care to sign this one?
I think we have to now. Worst thing's been said.
So then, do we need a, any other act?
Nope.
Alright.
It's been proclaimed.
Okay, thank you all.
Now, in the spirit of proclamations, Amanda Easton, National Library Week.
Hello, I am Amanda Easton, I'm Sydney Public Library Director, and this week is National Library Week. Yesterday was Right to Read Day, and today is National Library Workers' Day. If you follow the Friends of the Sydney Public Library on Facebook, they're highlighting each of the library staff every day with a short profile and a photo. That way, if you're not sure exactly who's who, you can figure that out, and if you know who's who and you just want to know more about us, you have the opportunity. So since we are in proclamation mode, I would like to request that Mayor Brad Sherman read a proclamation declaring National Library Week, and I'm not going to read it for him and make you do it.
I was just saying, we've established procedure, he reads it for me, but that's, that's fine, if you want me to.
I believe you have a copy in your packet?
Um, if I would have printed my packet off prior to coming here, I would. But in a few seconds, we'll have the opportunity. Alright, National Library Week, two thousand and twenty-four proclamation, whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life, whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equality and access for all, whereas libraries adapt the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. Whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas the libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be resolved that I, Brad Sherman, Mayor, proclaim National Library Week, April seventh through thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library and explore the wealth of resources available. And so that's it, it's been proclaimed. You're free to go, I just have one question. As a informational expert, when was the last time we had Tree City or Arbor Day Week, National Library Week, and a solar eclipse in the same week?
Um, I don't believe that's ever happened before.
This is the first time ever. A new world. Thank you for your affirmation.
I'm the next, I'm the next up agenda item as well, so.
Well, why don't you just stay here?
That's what I was thinking.
Tell us how wonderful Marva is.
So, um, yes, I would like to recommend, on behalf of the Sydney Public Library Board, recommend Marva Elwanger to be appointed to the library board. Do you have that, since you didn't print your packet, or do you need that one too?
Just so you know, I did print the next one, I'm ready for that. But if you wouldn't mind telling me some wonderful stuff about Marva.
So, yes, um, so, Marva Elwanger, as you probably know, sat on the city council. She's also been on the Historic Preservation Board, and we think that she would be a great applicant, or a great applicant for the library board, and all five, with unanimous vote to, of all current members, all four current members, it was a unanimous vote to recommend her.
And is five the amount of positions you have?
Five is the total, yes.
You are currently at full capacity?
Uh, no, we have four, and Marva will make five.
Right.
Yes.
After, after this is approved, we'll have five.
She, yes.
Perfectly able to operate.
Do I need to read that for you, the background discussion part? I'm sorry, this is, I'm really bad.
Do you guys want to read it? You want to just?
You can read it.
Well, that's what I mean, I don't want to assume that you can't read the paragraph yourself.
Yes, I have tap certified all of these gentlemen before you have the ability to read and probably have read it, so we can skip all of it.
Okay. Then.
So, we just, you're looking for a motion to approve Marva Elwanger's position on your library board?
That is correct.
So moved.
Alright.
I'll say it.
It was Radcliffe and Bondegarde with the second. Roll call please.
Buckner.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Bondegaard.
Yes.
Strowman.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, David's up.
So, um, this is not something new, we've been talking about this since two thousand and twenty-two in preparation for our infrastructure sales tax ballot issue, and what we want to talk about, what I want to talk about is the Northside Park. This is something that the city council has made a priority, priority over and over and over again, excuse me, in the infrastructure sales tax election, in several strategic planning sessions, and other meetings, and budget sessions. So, anyway, what I wanted to do, last time the council had met in their strategic planning session, they had asked me to kind of go out and see what this process might look like, what we would need to do, how we put this together, what other funding sources there might be out there to, to couple with our own, to make it an even bigger and better project, and how that process would work. So I did, and since then, I've went out, I've, I've talked to a few different places. The best granting opportunity I can find is through Gammon Park. That is an up to six hundred thousand dollar match for any specific park project with a fifty-fifty match. Now, there are a few things they require, I, I will say this, I was, had a really nice conversation with the administrators of this program, who assured me that just being in Western Nebraska would give us high points because they like to have more projects out in this area. Also, there's certain things, of course, that are required, such as handicap accessibility and things like that, which we would, we would do, that would be our own city code that would require us to do that anyway, if we were going to put in any, any new sidewalks and things like that. They also give a lot of extra points for amenities, such as that sign, interpretive, interpretive aspects, like educational interpretive aspects, a picnic areas, and also a common like community gathering space, either if it's just a big place, or like a big awning, or something like that, that would be a nice place for a community to gather and maybe do, or somebody could take their family and do a family reunion, or whatever, a birthday, or however you, whatever you would want to do in that space. So those are some things to take into consideration. What I will need, though, before we enter this process, and if the council chooses to continue to go down this path, I would like to bring a resolution to you, saying yes, you would like to apply these grant funds through the Gammon Park, so that's what they will require for, for this grant, is a resolution from the council saying, yes, we support this program and we want to use, use these funds. The cycle is from May to September, and then, so, so that'll begin very soon, but we have all the way till September to make a submission, and the grant awards will be, the grants will be awarded in January of two thousand and twenty-five, with the April to July of twenty-five grant agreement, they'll award them, and then it'll be a few more months, and then they'll finally send out the agreements for you to sign. They'll probably do that wonderful e-signature thing that you love so much, Brad.
Almost did.
You got really good at the last one there. So then, they would probably be looking at, if you were going to break ground on this early two thousand and twenty-six, the spring of two thousand and twenty-six. That also, I know that pushes out a little bit, it does give us some time to stockpile a little more of our infrastructure sales tax to get a bigger, the more we got, the more, you know, we can ask for a match for, so. Anyway, that's the process, and I just wanted to come to the council tonight and see if this is something you want me to move forward with, move forward with putting a resolution together, move forward with applying through the Gammon Park's department for a matching grant, which is fifty to fifty. And also, one thing we will probably want for our grant, which we have absolutely nothing right now, they do not require expensive engineering designs or anything like that, but they would like some kind of a design, you know? Maybe it's like somebody who RDG has done for us in the past, up at the corridor, putting some nice little pictures and renderings together for us, they would like to see something like that, so there would be an expense with that. We could probably pay for that out of our park infrastructure sales tax, if that's what the council wants to do, but those are the two things I want to ask. Is this something that, I mean, clearly you've wanted to do this for a year and a half, but do you want to move forward with some, a, a small expense for some kind of a, uh, renderings or drawings or a easy design? Now, I will say this, the, the grant, one thing I like about the grant, and we would do no matter what anyway, but it absolutely requires public input, and we definitely want to have public input on something like this, so we'll make that, we will advertise that heavily when we get to that point. I don't want people to think that when we're throwing together a design that's going to have renderings on it, that this is set in stone and they've been locked out, that's not how this works. We just kind of need an initial, initial, um, design that shows that we're meeting their qualifications, what they require in their grant guidelines, and then there will be public input later for how it really should look, and, you know, what the aesthetics and the feel of it would be, so I didn't want you to think that we were, by doing a design, that this is like an etched in stone thing, and that's where, where it ends, so.
So the, the renderings are necessary for the application, or at least they would go a long way towards helping us?
It would get some points for your application, if you can show what you really have, have in, in mind, and that, and that what you have in mind incorporates some of their, some of their guidelines.
So we would have the public meetings before the renderings, or?
Uh, we would do the renderings just to submit the grant funds, but then we would have public meetings to, those renderings aren't beat all, oh, they're not engineering designs, they're just, here's what we want to do, we want to do this beautiful thing, and, and we've incorporated some of your guidelines in doing so. If you so choose to give us this money, then we will go out and get a, a, a public, a public input and do the real engineering for, you know, how we're going to put it together.
I certainly like the idea of getting an extra six hundred thousand dollars to help along with the project, so.
Yeah, hopefully we'll get the, you know, hopefully we would get the full amount, that would be great. It might cost us a little bit, too, I mean, I don't know how much we'll have in our sales tax account by then, but we'll, we'll look around and see what else I can do to come up with maybe another matching grant somewhere to get us there, or whatever we need to do. I, I, I know it's a priority to you guys, so.
Do you have an idea, David, of what you want it to look like? Do you want it to mirror what we have now?
I, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I haven't, I, I think the public and the council are probably going to have a better idea of, of that than, than, than me, I mean, I certainly think they're right, it should be accessible to everybody, and I know at one point, in the very beginning, when we first started talking about this a year and a half ago, we had talked about maybe even doing a crisscross sidewalk through there, with some kind of gathering space in the middle where everybody could, so everybody would have access to get to it, if, you know, they wouldn't have to go on the grass or the gravel or anything to get to that space. I think that's probably a good idea, and it sounds like that's kind of what they're looking for, is some kind of accessibility place that's a good gathering pa, place for the public, so even our rough things that we drew in the, like Tom drew on a, on a napkin in our original meeting, sounds like that's kind of what they're looking for, so I mean, I think probably at least that kind of thing, I think, would probably be a good idea. Other amenities, I, I don't know, I mean, probably going to depend on what the public would like to see.
Would you put the pavilion in and a cross sidewalk, or would you?
Yeah, somewhere near there, you would think, somewhere accessible, so people could get to the middle.
All areas can get there and separate.
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd probably be a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I just was wondering what you, what you were thinking on it, but early stages.
Yeah. We've been at it for a long time, and it's going to be a long time more, I think, before we, before we get there, so.
But at least they know it's coming.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, you guys have been talking about this for quite some time now, so.
They're seeing action on it, I think that's the biggest thing, is that they're seeing action on it, and it's not just, you know, fancy words, and, hey, we want to do this, we want to do this, they actually see the city manager, uh, putting in the work and putting the plow on the ground to make sure that, uh, they get what they have coming to them on that side of town. So do we need to take a vote, or you just need us to recommend?
I didn't really need a vote yet, I, we will need a vote when it comes down to like resolutions and, and grant applications and things like that, but right now, I didn't want to go down that path if, if this wasn't what, what the council wanted to continue. We will have to, even, even though it's only a design, we will have to put it out to bid, that way we can claim it later on the grant, they are allowing you to go back on that, generally with grant, you can't, it's only things going forward you can, you can claim as an expenditure, but as far as this is concerned, your design, you can go back and claim later on the grant, so we could get fifty percent of this back, but to do that, it will have to be a public bid, because that's what almost any grant would require you to put this out to bid, so I guess I'd like to know if that's something you guys want me to put together a bid package for.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sounds like we all agree.
Okay, perfect. I will bring back something that, I'll probably bring that back to you, whatever that bid looks like, so you can actually then vote to say, yes, we want to put this out, but before we did all that, right?
Yeah.
So, that's all I had.
Alright, perfect, thank you, David.
Thank you.
And Burke? Any questions? She's always very smart when you ask her questions, right? Knows the answers, wrote the checks, you should probably know. Alright, well, we have a motion to approve the claims for March. A motion. Motion by Buckner.
Second.
Second by Strowman. Roll call please.
Sherman.
Yes.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Bondegaard.
Yes.
Strowman.
Yes.
Buckner.
Yes.
All right, motion passes five to zero to approve the budget, or the claims for March. Almost got ahead of myself with what we've all been waiting for. Kagan, for our one, the budget report.
Good evening, council. So, breaking down March, it was another good month for all departments across the board. You know, general fund is looking fine. As you'll notice, that I kind of broke things out a little bit differently to give you more of an in-depth view, now that we're roughly about 50% through our fiscal year. You can see how we stand on a year-to-date portion on pages two and four of my portion of the packet. Jumping down into it, our property tax did fall 20 grand to LY, but again, this is just a timings thing. If we go to page two on that side, you'll see that actually, year-to-date, the same timeframe last year, we're actually up about $3,000. So, looks like everybody's paying the bills on time and getting everything in there. When we look at sales and occupation tax, we're up 17K there. The main growth that we're seeing, again, is the sales tax. People are out and about buying things, doing things. Travel's also a big play for us, as people, you know, as our summer comes, I guess, and people start to travel down to Ovalalla and things like that, and stop in for candy bars, gas, so on and so forth. That helps us out as well. Fees for service, up 32K to LY. This definitely is falling more in line with 21, 22. I'm going to assume most of this is a timing aspect. I didn't dig into the weeds on it. The, the main growth is coming from golf course, you know, opening up. Everybody's getting their memberships. Everybody's starting to golf and enjoy the season there, so. Dropping down into state, federal, and county, up 30 grand from LY. The main reason there is, we didn't have a reimbursement from the state at this time last year, so we saw a huge jump. But this does fall more in line with the previous years before that, so. Down to franchise admin fees, we're down 216K. This one, I know, is a timing thing. We have those submitted that last week of March. They'll come in this first pay for the admin fee side, so we'll see that actually be a positive in April as opposed to being streamlined there. But then, again, going into that other aspect, 13th Avenue building, tell that is off the books. We'll, we'll continue to see that one, right? So, and like I said, going down to those year-to-date numbers, this is just kind of looking at quick facts showing that each and every one of the general fund aspects or revenue departmental aspects is up, and we are performing to where we have previously. No big changes, no big concerns or anything like that. Jumping into revenues and expenditures on the department level, general fund, down 41 grand. But each one of our other departments and proprietary functions is, has had a great month. They've all done a great job, and they make my life easy when I have to, you know, talk about how positive they are, right? So, general fund, again, it's going to come down to those admin fees is why we're, we're seeing that little bit of a dip there, but as soon as we get those back in April, it, it'll go in line. And then, as we jump into revenues and expenditures for the year-to-date stuff, this is the, the main idea that I wanted to get across, that we're all positive, we're doing great. Financially, I have no concerns with where we stand today. Each of the department heads is doing a great job managing the expenses, as well as their revenues, staying on top of their work, as well as making sure that they have the necessary supplies to get the job done, so. Any questions?
Well, I'm certainly no finance expert, but if our sales and occupancy tax are up and fees for services are up, that's, that's a sign the city's doing pretty good, right?
Correct.
That's a wonderful thing. Any other questions, comments?
Does that support the general fund at all?
The, yeah, sales tax, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's 21 grand.
Yeah.
Nothing to worry about, really. I mean.
All right, well, if there's no more questions for Kagan, we have a motion to approve his, oh, Paul, go ahead. Please do.
Paying a lot of sales tax, so. Out of ours from the store, so we've seen a lot, a lot more traffic.
Really, so. Things are, things are going well over there, too.
And we appreciate that, thank you. Please stay on top of that.
Now. Works out, we're all doing good. You're doing good. Brock's doing really good. All right, as they negotiate.
I'll move.
Motion by Bondagard to approve the claims, and second by Strowman, roll call, please.
Redcliffe.
Yes.
Bondagard.
Yes.
Strowman.
Yes.
Buckner.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Kagan. And then we have the city manager's report.
I do have a few things. I want to remind the council that I will be out of the office on Monday, Tuesday. I will be leaving Sunday to go to the Innovation and Housing Expo in Lincoln. As you know, we went to this, the first time we went was last year, where we teamed up with Twin Cities Development and Western Nebraska Economic Development, the Panhandle, to go see if we could drum up some developers for housing, since there's just not anything in the, in the area that will do that. And everybody came back really well. I mean, Gareen came back with somebody that, a developer to build houses, so did Scottsby, and so did we. And they'll be getting ready to do that very soon here in Prairie Winds. So it worked out very good for us for our first time out of the chute. We went last year mostly as a vendor with our booth setup, so that we could talk to the developers and try to get them interested in, in coming to the Panhandle to build and develop here, and give business to our local subcontractors. And we all wound up doing a very good job at that. What we're going to do this time is send a little bit larger contingent, instead of just two of us going. I think there'll be about four of us, because we discovered last time, it was our first time, we didn't know, that there were some really, really good sessions that we thought we should be sitting in on. And so we're going to take a couple extra people, so that we can maybe rotate and actually attend some of the sessions, rather than just pitching ourselves out in the hallway to possible developers, but we will do that as well again. So it was successful last year. We want to expand, expand our role a little bit in that conference this year. So I'll be out of town for that, just wanted to let everybody know. Also, this weekend is the Spring Expo. I won't be able to go Sunday, because I'll be driving to Lincoln, but that's going Saturday and Sunday, so everybody go out to that. There's a lot of really great vendors out there, and I hear the Stephens is giving away $5,000 of furniture, so that's, that's a lot. You can really redo a living room with that kind of money. So anyway, everybody should go out to that. And I wanted to personally thank all of our electric crews and first responders for everything they went through this weekend with the horrible winds that just tore everything apart, and I think they're still out there working in some of the county areas. And so thank you, Greg, to your crew, and Joe, and everybody else for everything you did. We appreciate it. I know you were out all night long. That's, that's, that's just a fact. You were out there all night long, and, and I mean, I thank, thank you very much for that. And also, I think sometime before May, the mayor and I and another council member, I think it was Bert that did it last year, need to meet with the Shann County Community Center, to talk about our contract with them, where they provide the programs for the, you know, softball, soccer, all that kind of thing, and we give them some, some money to do that. So the way it's set up is it has to be their board president, the director of their activities, and the director of the community center, which is Mike Nema. So those three, on our side, it needs to be the mayor, another council member, and myself. So we need one volunteer, other than Brad, who can't get off the hook. He's, he's stuck.
I'm already volunteered.
You're already, you're contractually obligated, so.
I have a volunteer for Brock and Paul. Can we bring four?
I would say it doesn't matter.
Well, honestly, we could, yeah, it has to be even numbers, yeah. So you can draw straws or however you want to do that.
Tell you what, after the meeting, we'll arm wrestle for it.
Rochambeau.
I like arm wrestling.
I guess clearly whatever game we, I'd have an influence on that. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll get it figured out before then. We won't prolong.
Yeah, because I'll probably reach out to Mike here next, before the end of the week, and see when we can get it scheduled. I want to know whose schedules I'm working with, so.
Whatever date they choose might limit somebody's.
Yeah, you got to get six people's schedules in line, so. But we didn't, it didn't seem to be too difficult last year, so.
No, as a matter of fact, I thought they were pretty easy to get along with.
So that's all I had. If you guys just want to let me know sometime soon, who that would be, then we'll get that scheduled. That's all I had.
All right. Lori is just chomping at the bit to say something. What are you going to tell us?
That I don't have anything to say.
Well, I misread that look.
I'm good.
All right. Jill? Kagan?
Rough, rough, rough YouTube girl.
It was a really nice evening.
Ratings are down.
Out, play with their kids in the park, the beautiful parks that we have here in Sydney. And so what did we get?
Twelve.
Okay.
You at least, I think the double digits.
Yeah, that's a dozen.
Currently, there's four.
Well, once I started, once I started talking again.
Challenge the Neilson ratings on that.
I think we tried, no.
That's all right. I mean, we're there. It's a service that we provide, not necessarily, or it is not, what do they call that, legally required. It is something we do just because we love our citizens and want them to see from the comfort of their own home what goes on here in the evenings. And only 12 of them decided to show up. It'll get better.
They could be having watch parties.
Randy?
Big fat goose egg here. That's something really.
All right, I'll wait. Amanda, anything else?
Did I mention that it's National Library Week?
Not only that, you proclaimed it.
We did proclaim it. You don't necessarily have to wait for National Library Week to come in and thank the library staff. So we have a pretty, pretty nice crew of people working at the library who, who do an awful lot, so please stop by and tell them how much you appreciate it.
Fantastic. Tom? We'll be reaching out to council to see if one or a few can make it to the tree giveaway, and we'll hand that councilman a Tree City USA flag, just to kind of bring that to the community. We'll stay in touch and see who can make it. All right, Bert? Landfill, a big thank you to them. They came with their payloader with the grapple, and got a huge spruce tree root ball hauled off for us, so Dean's crew helped us out with that after the wind swung on. Parks crew and cemetery crew burned at the golf course today, so we were the ones that smoked up the South End Town. One big thank you to Patty Jeffers' family for donating the playground equipment that was installed late last week at North Park. It's a giraffe climber, and it's for, it's in memory of Brad Jeffers, the principal of North End. Thank you to that. No, thank you, Tom. Greg?
Oh, just made it through the storm. We did take some bumps and bruises, it was pretty hard hits. You're probably wondering why we still had outages when we got, you know, three quarters of our town underground, but it was all because of the overhead that we still have caused the underground to go out. And it caused a major problem on our south sub. That's why we were down on that one from midnight to around 1:30 or so, before we got everything switched around to get everybody else back up. Rest of the time on our outages, it was a very north end where we're currently working on our conversion now, and that's where all of our problem was, for the most part, for the weekend. Fighting 80 mile an hour winds was not easy.
Yeah, no, and, and I, yeah, I clearly don't think we can say it enough, but the fact that you guys are out there in probably the least safe conditions that a person should be out working with, one of the least safe things to be touching in wind and rain.
That's true.
But thank you. Dean?
Nothing.
Brandon?
I want to say thank you to all the department heads that were working this weekend in the conditions, and ready for Brad to lose the pie in the face.
Bert?
Just did a work of self, I feel like, to tackle their problems. They're not fine with this. I appreciate that, man.
Paul?
Nope, just thanks, everybody. I, I think there's still 200 poles that are down throughout the area.
But our, our city, we're good. Yeah, I think the weed belt was.
Weed belt.
They got hit hard.
Weed, weed belt and tri-state got demolished.
Bad luck.
Yeah. And there's crews working all the way up through the north part of the state still. And it was, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to actually see some of those poles, but they are astonishing that they get snapped in half like that. It's unbelievable. And so, thank you, guys, for doing everything you did, and all the departments for everything you guys did.
Brock, you have anything to say?
I don't think so. Got some of those there. Same thing, you know, great communication about the power outage. Got a message from the city manager, keeping all of us informed. He went out and supported the team. Guys and ladies that were out there on it right away, fighting the winds, making sure that we got power restored to those people that needed it, something we take so lightly and for granted until, until it happens. I want to add a boy to Chief. There was an incident that made its social media rounds on some private property that he handled exemplary. Some people didn't handle it so exemplary, but he did what he felt was best. We worked with David and the C, the private property owner and the other individual, and, and we came to an agreeance. And we got all that diffused and taken care of, and thank you both. I think the, the property owner thanks you as well. And then Chief went the extra, extra, the extra mile and instructed the property owner on what to do to keep those individuals from violating her property. Had an opportunity to go see Pretty in Pink at the school. Always a good opportunity when, you know, we as city councilmen and city employees and such get out and support our, our students and future thespians. It was a really good play. I was surprised by it. I saw a lot of moms in there that were very entertained, and I saw a lot of fathers that was, they were trying to stay awake, so that was cool.
Lot of grandmas.
Lot of grandmas, lot of grandmas, so. That was good, I mean, especially the end of the year. So, you know, just something to keep in mind, that the kids really appreciate when they see, you know, high-level individuals show up for those, those things and events. April is the start of all of the, the roadwork. I would like to say to our 12 YouTubers and everybody else that's going to watch this later, when you see those guys out there working, make sure you take an opportunity to, to thank them. Make sure you're looking out for them. Make sure you're, you're taking your time when you're riding past, and you're not just flying around, because they're out there fixing the streets and, and doing those things that you asked us to do. Great Trash Race, that is getting ready to go on, and I am to read this real fast. It says, "This event is to promote environmental awareness and community involvement in cleaning up litter and trash in the public spaces. Participants form teams and race to see who can collect the most trash in a set amount of time. It's a fun and interactive way to make a positive impact on the environment." And that's being put on by Keep Sydney Beautiful. Everybody knows their mission. I, I think that the current team and leaders have taken that, that organization by the horn, and has definitely made Keep Sydney Beautiful a driving force in keeping our town beautiful in more ways than one. We have the Pie in the Face, which is also a Keep Sydney Beautiful deal. You can go to their website and read all about that, what the funds will benefit. We have three locations in which to donate. All of them were utilized by our mayor this morning. The city building, the community center, and then the new gym location. So if you have an opportunity and you want to donate, you got some spare change in your pocket. in your pockets, quarters, nickels and dime, feel free to put them in Bondagard, Strowman, Bradshaw and, uh... I've never not wanted to win something so bad, so, uh...
Well, if you win, that means you have the most money.
I'll just donate it to y'all. So, uh, I like the fact that, you know, again, we're just, we're just providing opportunities for our community to come together and just have fun with, with, with their city leadership and things of that nature. Uh, the weather's changing, time to shop, like Kagan was saying, time to get out and fellowship and enjoy all the different festivals, uh, celebrate Sydney, America, and, uh, come out and, and shake the cobwebs out and just, uh, enjoy where we live, why we live here, and, uh, I think that's all I got. I think I got more to you, so, yeah.
Well, I can make this go on.
Do you have any great trash races?
Um, no, but it's on the website and I, we, we can get it.
I think it's June first, isn't it?
Is it June first?
I think so.
June first.
June first, okay. Dean is in the, uh, pie, he's the KSB representative, so don't, don't think it's just us. If anybody feels a certain kind of way about old Dean, I see some, yeah, yeah, I see some head shaking. Certain kind of way about old Dean, here's your opportunity, so, yeah, yeah.
Loser is definitely in this room.
Loser is definitely in this room, and we're not talking about whipped cream in the pan, we talking about home-cooked apple pie, cherry pie, something, uh, pie, that might be a little warm when you put it in the fridge right there, and, and, you know, so, yeah, this is the real deal, but coconut cream, if, uh, the person who has not consented, he, he should not be named. There you go. But, I mean, ultimately, I, I guess that's what I'm trying to say, is the weather's changing, things are about to happen, very exciting year and season for Sydney, uh, this is why we live here, and the greatest city in America, did I say that right? Okay, I stole a line from my mayor, and, uh, I think I'll, I think I'll putt and pass to, to you, boss.
Alright, well, a few people have mentioned it already, but it is, uh, never a bad time to thank a city employee for what they do. Greg and his team, uh, exemplified what, uh, being a city employee is in the worst of times, they're out there, uh, doing what they do, um, and it's not an exaggeration to say that they were risking their lives out there to get us power back. I don't think anybody would have argued if they just waited it out, um, but, uh, they didn't, they got in there and, and got us power back, and it's, again, it's, it's what we do on a daily basis as, uh, city employees, and I, we appreciate you guys, and, uh, and you see them anywhere, anytime, please thank them. Um, and, uh, and for those who haven't been paying attention, uh, no female athlete in the history of Nebraska has ever high-jumped six foot. We had one go six foot, and then the next week go six-one, and from all accounts, there's more left in her, so this is gonna be amazing to watch. So, keep that in mind if you can, uh, make a Sydney track meet or go somewhere else where Sydney's having a track meet. Uh, a lot of great athletes, um, if you, uh, befriend Donna Wiederberg, uh, she will, uh, give you pictures upon pictures of the meets. And, uh, I saw something where dudes is gonna be featured on America's Best Restaurants the week of July eighth, I believe they're asking, so, uh, clearly you can eat there whenever you want, but, uh, July eighth, you might get on TV. And of course, a lot has been said about the jars, and, uh, I'm all for putting money in anybody's jar, including my own if it raises money for Keep Sydney Beautiful. Wednesday night, uh, they're having burgers at the Elks. Bingo on Thursday, and Sunday, breakfast. So you can spend almost all week there if you want. There is also an expo on Saturday and Sunday where a lot of other, uh, small businesses and stuff will be appreciating you stopping by their booths, checking things out. In another week, the Sydney Shooting Park will have their annual fundraiser, which is pretty awesome. And as David said, uh, if you want to build a house in Sydney, you can go ahead and do that anytime, um, preferably if you know how, that would be helpful. If you have a crew that wants to put together and start a, a construction company, we appreciate that as well. And then lastly, uh, I spent several hours over the last week or so, uh, stopping into local businesses to thank them for what they do, talk to them, um, see what's happening, a lot of positive comments, a lot of happy people, I found, uh, businesses that, uh, didn't know about, um, and, um, I, uh, made a Facebook post today, right before I got here, and I already got comments about businesses that I didn't go into, so I promise, I will visit all of you and post pictures, and if, uh...
Can you ever come to visit us?
That's what I said. Figured I would have been...
It's on the list.
My, uh, responsibilities outside of the, the mayor job, uh, sometimes limit my availability, but I will always call you back if I don't answer my phone at two-four-nine-two-three-two-one, if you have any questions about that or the businesses, uh, that I visited, I was gonna tell a couple stories, um, about some of the businesses that I visited, um, there's a gentleman that, uh, does embroidery out of his own house and, uh, would, uh, is looking to possibly, uh, be inside of a building here because it's getting out of hand. Some businesses, uh, Sam Wilkins is starting a, uh, Wilkins Solution computer business, and, um, I'll do, I'll do a better job on Facebook, uh, talking about some of these places, but I just, I want...
Would you say you visited about a hundred, uh, businesses or so?
You know, there, there was a hundred.
About a hundred?
As a matter of fact, yeah, there was a, uh, uh, there was a list that I actually used.
About a hundred, okay.
And some of them I had to call, so I wasn't sure, talked to, a, a lot of great people, realized that there's a lot of, and that's, that's where I realized that, uh, my list is a hundred and thirteen right now.
So a hundred and thirteen, so we exceed a hundred.
Yeah, there's more than that.
That's a lot, that's great.
It is, uh, it is...
That's great.
It is pretty fabulous, and every business that I stopped into was, uh, happy to see me, some were happy to see me leave, but I created some happiness everywhere I went, and, uh, again, uh, there's just so much stuff going on, uh, I went into five different places just today that are either expanding, remodeling, or have moved to a bigger location, which, I mean, obviously has got to be a great sign for, uh, Sydney, and, uh, if you want to start a business in Sydney, now's the time, if you need some extra money, walk into almost any of these businesses and they're looking for help. So, if you walk into a business and they're not looking for help, I'm sorry, um, but most of them are, and, and we'll find something for you to do if you need a little extra money, so. With that being said, at six-twenty-four, oh, we are not gonna adjourn the meeting, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go into closed session to discuss a little contract, uh, which means we have to vacate the room, uh, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here.
A motion for this?
And after the meeting, uh, there's minimal chance there will be actual any action, so if you're, like, writing for the newspaper or the radio and you don't want to stick around, you don't have to, you can start working on your story right now. But with that said, I'm wondering...
Do you need a motion to go into a closed session?
Yes, we have a motion to go into closed session. Radcliffe made the motion, Strowman with the second, roll call please.
Bondagard?
Yes.
Strowman?
Yes.
Buckner?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Radcliffe?
Alright, motion passes five zero to go into closed session, which again, thank you all for coming, but please leave quietly and safely.